Have an amendment with the town.
Okay.
This one's a new contract.
So this was work that was done under that grant that we have, community development with a number of different towns that kind of went over.
Yep.
What they projected, so they're asking for an amendment.
Mm-hmm.
This is the one they did the roof down by the rail trail there, and then they had to do insulation and windows.
Right, yeah.
And doors and like.
So we knew about this already, didn't we vote on this already?
They've had a couple of, this is the second amendment to the contract.
Okay. All right, so I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the amended contract, well, contract amendment number two for twenty-nine Con Warren Road.
Second.
So motion made, seconded. Any further discussion we had?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Jason, you're up.
Oh, this one.
Highway mechanic and.
You know, the history of this, obviously, the union has not responded in any way other than we have to analyze this. We waited our ten day period, they acted on nothing, so that allows the selectmen to create a new position that we have there on paper.
Hmm?
And we want to select them to move into the head mechanic's position and with that accompanied by his break.
Okay. Yeah, so I'll entertain a motion that we institute the head mechanic's position as we discussed, having passed ten days and the highway union has not responded to institute that.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion we had on that?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the assistant tree warden, did we do that already?
No.
No.
All right. So we made the highway superintendent the tree warden, and he has recommended an assistant because he's quite busy with other duties, so. What was his name?
Patrick.
He's down here. His name said Jason.
Oh, yeah. Gustafson. Yeah. Yeah, so I would entertain a motion to make that approved.
I move to approve Patrick Gustafson of ninety-four Ward Street to the assistant tree warden's position.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion we had on that?
No.
I will just say that he's done some incredible work on the rail trail, right?
Mm-hmm.
With the stone wall and.
Yeah.
And the trees and stuff, so he's a known quantity to us, so. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, young man. You'll have to see the town clerk at some point to get sworn in, but off you go. Thanks. All right, stormwater issues, Mr. Arnold. You're next. Yeah. I think we've seen this before, you've been to us before on this, right?
Yeah, we've talked.
A while, a while back, I think we've seen, at least I have, I know that much.
We saw the Spring Street one.
I mean, I've got photographs just to kind of illustrate what problems are, and I think everybody is aware of. And possibly have over at Summer Street, and that side of town is wet as it's ever been. But I'd like to thank everybody here for giving me a chance to come through the meeting today to you on this. Realistically, I'm here to understand how the selectmen propose we fix the water problem, stormwater, nades our basement at ninety-four Summer Street, please. Dem and I've lived in town since nineteen eighty-two. We raised our four kids here. We participate in youth support, late scout, church, local programs, local government, the United States. It's been, we found it a great place to be. It's a great town. And we do some good things here. I'd like to personally thank, and I don't use firefighters, but I'm familiar, not me involved. I'd like to personally thank members of North Brookfield with our fire department. Guys never fail to come out when it's tough. I can call these guys daily, and when the biggest fan, pardon me, and the water's coming up, the water's rising, and these guys are out there and they're putting a pump in the cellar to augment the few pumps that we already have. You know, it's a little frightening because you can lose a lot of money in something like that, but anyway. So thank you everyone. Joey, Jim, all of that too. You know, you can see Joey Darren, Pat, over at our house, and you can get a visit if you want to visit, we're going to be there to meet him. So as you see, the problems, there are problems of quite some kind, and I'd like to go to you as well. Like the neon problem, the underground roof to Ray Blake, Gary Jean, and Jason Devote. During Ray's tenure, several attempts were made to sabotage and he provided what turned out to be a pretty good solution for a temporary fix. The culvert that runs under our property is not listed as easement by the town on that view. What it's there is put in somehow to carry water away from, you know, the area. So, can you speak out on that? Thank you. Okay, is that something?
Okay, so. You know, Ray's, during Ray's tenure, he gave us a kind of a solution that was temporary, but most recently, we've had to renew efforts by sending a certified letter to the selectmen to make them aware of a letter that was sent in June two thousand and nineteen regarding the same thing. We've never heard anything back from the town that's been official as to how we can resolve this problem. You know, the receipt of the letter was acknowledged by Ashley, I went down to visit and down at the town hall, and she told me, okay, we got it, we haven't done anything yet, but we're going as we can. So the questions I've asked are left unanswered. You know, it's pretty much it. As of this time, the flooding problems are increasing during to dirt, due to this clogged culvert, and this is affecting property values. Not just at my house, it's affecting property values in our neighborhood. I've been recently told that private well water is a suspect of creating the problem, and I'd like to assure you that isn't the case. I've done the math, so with an inch of rain, our pumps run nonstop for three or four hours and evacuate sixty-seven thousand gallons of water from our basement. That's two swimming pools above ground, thirty-three feet wide, fifty-five inches high. That's a lot of water. Maybe we could sell that back to the town for drinking water. So. That right there is the issue. We under, I understand that the water is coming in as stormwater, it's coming in through this culvert, pipes diverting water into it from catch basins uphill from us. Water runs downhill, you can't stop that, that's always a given fact. Runs downhill, goes over the surface, drops into the ground. Now, one case last year, when we spoke with Jason, I had groundwater disappearing into sinkholes that I could take a metal rod and drop down six feet. My son stepped in one of the sinkholes and could have broken his leg. So. On this recent research that's been done by the town on wells overflowing, please send me a copy of the artificial hydrology report because I want to use that to fix the problem. I talked to our neighbor, Buzzy, he says his well hasn't overflowed yet. You know, that was a conversation I had with Buzzy yesterday. So, in interest in making this brief, because I don't want to take up any more time.
Yeah, because we do have to move on, so.
I know, I get it, I totally get it. How will the town in North Brookfield help us by putting the street stormwater where it belongs instead of our basement? Thank you.
All right, we, we'll get together with the highway superintendent because that's, you know, that's why the board hasn't done anything because it's not our, our area of expertise, so we'll have to.
So can we put a timeframe on, on some kind of a resolve or start of resolve?
Well, how about two weeks to get you an answer?
Okay.
Because that's our next meeting, so in the, in between that time, we will meet with the highway superintendent and we will get you an answer.
Okay, that's clear.
All right. All right, so the next agenda, put that on the next agenda. We'll have something for you by then.
Thank you.
Do we have this group?
Oh, yeah, that's sure.
Okay. I just want to, I'm, I'm skimming through it, but I want to look.
It's stimulating, so.
All right, so we're late for some poll hearings, we have four poll hearings. Six fifteen, do we have somebody from National Grid? Okay. Why don't you step up, we'll. So, what do I? There we go. The first one I have is Brookfield Road, National Grid to install two JO polls on Brookfield Road, beginning at a point three hundred feet south of the center line of the intersection of Donovan Road and continuing approximately sixty-five feet in the southerly direction. Installing two polls, thirty-one dash twenty-five and thirty-one dash fifty, in line between existing polls thirty-one and thirty-two on Brookfield Road, south of Donovan Road intersection. Is there anybody here that's in a butter to that that wants to be heard? Yes, sir.
First earlier, just the property that you live on, question is, what is a JO pole? Be able to watch yours.
JO pole is a jointment owned pole between National Grid and the telephone company.
So what's the exact, what are the poles that they are now even designing? What was the reasoning behind that?
The reason that they're adding those poles is because there's a private solar farm going in, and they had to reconductor the whole feeder, keep it up, so to speak. And in order to do that, they had to put these special hindrance cables into the primary cable. Those are a lot heavier than the regular spacer cables spaced out. So in order to keep it where it needs to be, it has to be supported, so they have to put these poles in between, the distance between the poles has to be shorter in those two places.
So are you going right around that topic or somewhere?
I don't know exact, I'm here for a couple of petitions for this solar place, this is not my job, I don't know where that is going in. So, but that's what they had to beef it up and do, they had to reconductor the whole feeder, put extra equipment in, harden the feeder, so that it's more reliable and that this solar farm is so far as to be in the service. I don't know anything about the solar farm, I'm only here for the poles that they need to be put in.
The only one is Hyner's and Ledoux's. And that's not on Donovan's?
No, it's all been engineered out, and that's exactly where they have to go to support that hindrance. If you, if you look up at the poles, you can see, they have all three bases of the primary bound together, it takes up a smaller place. That's very expensive and very.
So that's renovation cost, are you saying it's all up here right around that area?
No, it's just that they have to bring it from all the way from the substation all the way to the solar field. So that's why a couple of these petitions around that area are for that same project.
Okay, so you're increasing the poles to make it all the way down further?
Just these two poles, we're just adding these two poles, and then Dale mentioned the other ones.
The only thing hanging on those would be the wires.
It's, nothing's going to be hanging, it's just going to be supporting what's already there.
Oh, it's a guy pole.
Yeah, well, it's not a guy pole, but it's, it's going to be supporting, it'll be connected to it, but they're not adding any other electrical equipment.
But there's no higher or lower.
No, just like the others.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else to be said on that issue? I'll entertain a motion to approve that one.
I move to approve the. The new telephone poles on Brookfield Road as discussed.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next one I have is Donovan Road to install one SO pole on Donovan Road, beginning at a point approximately two hundred feet east of the center line of the intersection of Town Farm Road. Install a new midspan pole five-five-zero in line between existing pole four and pole five of Donovan Road, east of Town Farm Road. And what's that, SO pole, is that just a?
So we own, just National Grid.
Just National Grid, and is it supporting any?
It's a midspan that's going to go between pole five and six, so it's pole five and a half, same reason I just said.
Okay.
It's, it's, they reconducted the whole feeder, and it has to be put in to support the heavy equipment up there.
Okay.
For reliability.
Anybody here to be heard on that issue? Seeing nobody, I want to entertain a motion to approve SO pole on Donovan Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the third one is a National Grid to install one SO pole on New Braintree Road, beginning at a point approximately nine hundred and fifteen feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of Bell Road. Install P fourteen dash two for a second service to the garage for thirty-six New Braintree Road.
That's room sixty-seven.
Okay.
So the customer, his garage is down a steep slope, and the existing poles are on the other side of the road. We have, he wants power to his garage, so in order to keep the line high enough for the traffic that needs to be, we have to put another pole there. So it's because it's going to go straight down like that.
Okay.
That's why we're putting a pole there.
Is that pole going on the other side of the guardrail? There a guardrail there?
Yes.
So it's going on the other side of the guardrail?
Yes.
Will there be a guy going down?
Yes.
Anybody here to be heard? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would directly mark across the street from there, just want to make sure that that pole is going down on that side of the house, on that side of the street.
It's, you live where, across the street where the existing pole is?
Where they're building the new house, I would directly mark.
Well, this is not a house, it's a garage. That, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
So this is the map, the because, so the new house that has is a garage over here. We are wondering, is this, you're going to use the new pole or existing?
Okay.
That's going to be the new pole. Okay. Here. We are going to anchor this pole, fourteen, the one on your side?
Mm-hmm.
We're going to put it at anchor there.
Okay.
Because if we don't do that, those poles are going to pull it that way.
Right.
So it's, it's just going to be an anchor, a down anchor, still on town property.
Okay.
It's mean you're not going to build any new poles this time?
No, no.
So this one is actually our neighbor, it's a forty-three, we are forty-one over here. The new house that they have is over here, so you're going to build the new pole up.
Yeah, just one pole, so I want to keep the wires high going across the road.
Okay.
Okay, and then, because his, his garage is kind of down.
Yes, I see that.
So we don't want to, we don't want to put the, if I, if I tried to grab it from here, it would be too low for trucks going down that road. So nothing else is going over here.
On this side.
Right.
Thank you, because we are, we are worried and concerned about when this window.
Thank you.
So, yeah, there's a stake, there's a stake in the ground where that pole's going to go, so. You're welcome.
You all set? Okay. Anything else to be said from anybody? So I'll entertain a motion for that pole.
I move to approve the new SO pole on New Braintree Road at the location designated.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and the last one on this issue is. National Grid's going to install one JO pole on West Brookfield Road, beginning at a point approximately six hundred feet west of the center line of the intersection of Wine Road. Installing a new midspan pole one-nineteen on West Brookfield Road, in line between existing poles one-eighteen and one-twenty. Now, is that the same rationale, are we putting in a new pole because of the weight?
Same reason, same rationale.
Anybody here to be heard on that issue? Seeing no one, I'll entertain a motion to approve that pole.
I move to approve the new JO pole on West Brookfield Road as designated on the map.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, I think we're all set right, all four?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So are we needing to hear them now?
No, just because we have a special town meeting at seven, so.
Okay.
It'll be at the police station from now on.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much, have a good day.
Next on the agenda is Ms. Pucci with a presentation. Yep, be mindful of the time, we have a special meeting, so.
Gentlemen, thank you for your time, I am deeply appreciative of it. I have come today as a member of a plurality of about one hundred and seventy-six people. That has proposed a petition and a series of asks to the Board of Selectmen in regards to the usage of Zoom or other video chat software to be installed and maintained during Board of Selectmen meeting. Today, I am here to say that the North Brookfields citizens deserve the freedom and right to safely engage with their local government. A lot of people want to do their part to improve the town but cannot attend due to concerns with their individual safety in the pandemic. Now more than ever, communication tools like Zoom help keep the town free, open, and safe. They help our elderly folks especially, who find the strength to remain politically engaged. They help immunocompromised folks, who don't have to worry about their safety when being active citizens. We ask that the Board of Selectmen promptly reinstate the usage of a video chat software like Zoom to their meetings as an important channel of communication between the town and its people. We ask that they, the paramount administrative body of the town, prioritize and delegate proper and accessible usage of the software, so that each call may be clearly seen and heard by the citizens of North Brookfields. There is a tremendous amount going in town, and it is essential that the good folks of North Brookfield have safe and comfortable access to their local government's business. Zoom is, it is an essential tool for a town's government to prosper in connection with its residents, and we unify in our voice to urge the Board of Selectmen to reinstate this crucial political aid. With a plurality of one hundred and seventy-six signatures, we ask that the selectmen of North Brookfields, one, pledge to adopt the technological means to livestream, with the ability for town members to clearly hear and participate in all Board of Selectmen meetings happening on a regular basis. Towns around us like Brookfield, East Brookfield, West Brookfield, and Spencer have adopted Zoom, go-to meeting, and a dial-in phone line for their constituents. We would like to see similar technology at home. Two, to create a space of time before each Board of Selectmen meeting to set up and ensure that the technology is functioning properly. Three, to appoint a video savvy person to set up and ensure the correct Zoom usage at the beginning of each Board of Selectmen meeting. And four, make the Zoom link accessible online to share this link on the North Brookfield website and several other town news-related sites on Facebook. I thank you for your time, and I am grateful for the good work that you do here. I hope that we can collaborate to find a solution that brings the people of the town together in a safe way once again. Thank you.
Thanks, I think we'll take it under advisement at the moment, and we'll get back to you. All right?
If you are curious about any of the names or signatures, I have a full spreadsheet and PDFs that I could send to the board as well.
Yep, okay. Anything you want to say on it at this time?
No, we'll get a good look into it.
Okay. Yep.
I just want to say also, as a parent who uses a Taliban meeting, I have taken advantage of the child care facilities attached, it's no longer available. I know a lot of people who are very sad and very frustrated about being able to participate in the county, and due to lack of childcare and health care here, of, you know, being open, I'm very thankful to have that to be having. Put in some consideration, at least even like quick comments, like none of you have a laptop to look at, the YouTube comments or anything like that.
All right. Yeah, so you, you're actually mixing two issues, so of the Board of Selectmen's meetings.
And all meetings, yeah, I think really, and all meetings. Especially, especially the Taliban meetings, in my personal opinion, especially town meetings, we're all residents.
Right. So I'm trying to tell you they're two different issues, Board of Selectmen's meetings, we're the administrative board for the town, we're administrators, so those meetings are. People do not have the absolute right to comment, it's all through the chair, and I'll give you the Open Meeting Law thirty-eight, section twenty, if you want to look at it. We allow input because we value the input, but it's at our discretion and our, our methodology. Now, the town meetings are run by the, the town moderator, he's in absolute control of it, so we call them as the board, we set the warrant, and then they take care of everything. So I, the school's usually good at babysitting services and stuff like that, and I don't know why we don't have it this time, maybe because of the environment, but.
Right. We're just saying, like, the last one, you had, and what's happened, and then you.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I think that's a little cumbersome, but, but we'll take it under advisement.
All of the other Brookfields and Spencer are utilizing these sorts of technologies, and it makes very clear sense to me to join the rest of the good folks that are doing that. Thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Thank you. So next, we have some appointments to the beach, Town Beach Committee, there have been three individuals that have graciously put forward some.
I don't have that.
I know, but we have them, they put in, and I see they're here.
Two of them are here, I don't know if the third one's here. Right, Joe's here and.
Joe's here.
Tashina wanted to be on the.
And Michelle Thayer was the other one, so. I mean, I, I, unless you have an objection.
We need somebody to fill the positions, if you guys are willing to give it a shot.
Yeah, I think.
All right, well, I move to appoint all three of them to the Beach Committee.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you'll need to get sworn in by the town clerk, and I will send out emails to put you in touch with the East Brookfield contingency, so maybe we can get you involved in, in starting to talk to them about what needs to be done over there. Great, appreciate it, thanks for stepping up. Liquor license for the Brookfield Orchard. Brookfield Orchards looking to do their harvest season, various dates throughout, August, September, and October. They do it every year, it's never been a problem, they have their insurance. They have a beer and wine license, so. I'll entertain a motion for that.
I move to approve the one-day liquor license for Brookfield Orchards for the various days listed in their event schedule.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And do we have enough time for this last one, do you think? Want to take it up, resolution? Do you want to do that now, or do you want to, want to do this now, or do you want to step it back a week?
No, I'll bet it.
I'll bet it. Okay, so. Governor Baker has rolled back some of these guidelines and orders and whatnot on very specious data. And there was some comments, I, I think Brookfield Orchard was shut down on an event through the Board of Health, and there's been some comment about the use of the police department to go in. to go into people's yards to enforce the guidance. So, we want the people to understand the history of what's going on here and the board's opposition to both the governor and what's going on locally. So, we've prepared a resolution that we're looking to adopt. The resolution states simply, whereas Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 111, Section 104 specifically authorizes the Board of Selectmen to have access to the locations of infections within the town by stating specifically, quote, "If a disease dangerous to the public health exists in a town, the selectmen and the Board of Health shall use all possible care to prevent the spread of the infection and may give public notice of infected places by such means as in their judgment may be most effectual for the common's safety." And whereas, "The Board of Health consists of duly elected officials answerable only to the residents of North Brookfield and not to the Department of Public Health. And whereas, the Board, the Department of Public Health, by its own admission, has no statutory power or authority over duly elected local boards of health. And whereas, guidance, whether issued by the governor or Department of Public Health, is not a law, nor is it legally enforceable. And whereas, the Board of Health receives the location of infections within the town from the Department of Public Health. And whereas, the Board of Health, relying on, quote, "Guidance from the Department of Public Health," has refused from the onset of the COVID-19 infectious disease emergency to comply with established law and disclose the location of infections within the town to the selectmen as required by Mass. General Law, Chapter 111, Section 104. And whereas, despite numerous requests by the selectmen demanding that the Board of Health comply with the statute and disclose the location of infections to the Board of Selectmen for dissemination to the police chief and the fire chief. And whereas, the Board of Health's refusal to disclose the locations is in direct violation of a duly enacted statute. And whereas, the refusal of the Board of Health to inform emergency responders of the location of infectious individuals, subject to all, subjects all emergency personnel, as well as the general public, to an increased risk of exposure and infection. And whereas, the exposure and infection of emergency responders would result in a catastrophic disruption to the delivery of emergency services and create further public safety lapses. And whereas, the lack of information creates an increased level of panic when residents rely on rumor and conjecture about the locations of active infections. And whereas, the governor's latest, quote, "Order regarding gatherings" authorizes the local police to enter private property to enforce the order by way of non-criminal disposition under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 21D. And whereas, such enforcement without knowledge of actively infected individuals puts local officers at even greater risk. And whereas, the Mass. Chiefs of Police issued their own guidance to local departments not to issue tickets under the governor's latest order. Now therefore, until such time as the Board of Health fully complies with Mass. General Law, Chapter 111, Section 104, and provides the selectmen and by extension, the police chief and fire chief with the locations of all COVID-19 infections within the town, the selectmen do not authorize the police department to enforce any guidelines, orders, or rules that are not either duly enacted statutes of the Commonwealth or bylaws of the town of North Brookfield. So, this was precipitated by a lot of rumors that there was stuff going on at Hannaford's and Hannaford's had an active infection, which is absolutely not the case. And the, the information was weeks and weeks old. We currently only have maybe one active case in town, unless there's been something in the last few days. That's prompted this resolution and I want to entertain a motion by this board to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. No other, I think time's running short.
Yeah, we got to.
I want to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting pending the special town meeting.
So moved.
Motion made. Seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.